Good afternoon. We're here at the Attilina Howard Center on West Pascolet Street. We're about to start our Leon County School Board meeting. And the opening items, 1.01, Pledge of Allegiance. We will have Mr. Meeks come forward, please.
Please stand and join me in saying the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, our former SRO. Subject 2.01, change in addition, June 11, 2013. Type action consent. Number one, add item 11.08 to 11 items to consent contract cooperative agreement. 11.08, Baycrest Corporation Amendment. Number two, Rickers High School, HVAC renovations, building 18 through 21 project. Number two, add item 13.01 to 13 items of consent. Change orders. 13.01, Rippey's Construction, Inc., change orders. Number one, Astor Park Elementary School, buildings 2 and 3 project.
Madam Chair.
Mr. Crumpler.
Move the amended agenda?
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Crumpler and second by Ms. Rasmussen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It passes 4-0. Thank you. Superintendent Spotlight, 3.01, none to date. Recognitions, 4.01, Pineview Elementary School, Bronze Level Asthma Friendly School Award. Mr. Superintendent Pons.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to introduce the principal of Pineview Elementary School. And as Ms. Raming is coming forward, I did say, yay, she is here, Dr. Raming. This is quite an honor because her school, Pineview, has been recognized with the Health Department's Bronze Award. It's a level asthma friendly award. It's the first time in Leon County. So, Dr. Raming, congratulations and welcome to the podium.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Indeed, this is an honor. We have several others here with us this afternoon. And we are elated that we were able to achieve the Bronze Level for the Asthma Friendly School Award. And I believe this is the only one in the state.
Now, one of five.
One of five, okay. When we were presented, Mr. Superintendent, with this award, we were the only one in the state at that time. So, since that time, four other schools have been awarded. I'd like to thank those ladies that helped me with this, along with Pineview Elementary School. And all the ones back at Lake Bradford Road that are helping us to make sure that all of our students are safe. Thank you so much for allowing us the opportunity to serve in that capacity. Thank you.
And I just want to introduce from the Florida Asthma Coalition, which that's the hat that I have on right now. We have Julie Dudley.
Could you step up to the mic?
Oops, sorry. We have Julie Dudley and Jamie Forrest. They're also with Department of Health Bureau of Chronic Disease Prevention. And I don't know why it's so hard for me to say that. And then, of course, we have Health Services Extraordinaire Colleen Putnam, who really, really, really helped the school get everything together. So, I was excited to be a part of the celebration. The kids loved it. And they got bronze, but they're going to go for gold next year, right?
That's right.
Could you introduce yourself and what company you're with?
Oh, me?
You introduced everybody else but yourself.
I just don't seem to go away, do I? Diane Owens, I'm with United Healthcare Community Plan. And I get to do fun stuff like this, so.
Anyway, that's Mr. Crumpler.
Yeah, I was just going to, congratulations and also thank Diane and your company. You're right, you can't seem to go away. You were in an event, what was it, Friday?
Splash and Jam.
Yeah. Sponsors of the city Splash and Jam program was down at Walker Ford for the kickoff. And just, your company is doing a lot of great things for kids in this community, both in the public school system and in our city parks and rec programs. I want to recognize you. We couldn't be the type district that we are without folks like yourself. So, thank you.
Ms. Rasmussen?
Mr. Van Camp.
Oh, Mr. Van Camp?
Yeah, just say, congratulations. And you were right, you were the first, you know, with it. But also, just to thank Diane, of course, she says, well, she was a former school board employee too. She set the precedent of establishing our Medicaid billing programs and things. So, it's good to see you again, Diane, and continue. She knows a lot about Leon County schools and has never forgotten about us in anything that her succession does. So, we thank you and for the School Health Advisory Committee for what you all do. And so, congratulations.
Ms. Rasmussen?
As a member of the local Lung Association Board, I have to hasten to thank you for your diligence in going after this award and for working with the committee to make sure that all of our schools are doing everything that we can to be in compliance, not only, and to reach the gold standards that you all aspire to. So, thank you very much for being here and for your hard work.
Yes, and I want to congratulate you as well, Dr. Raming, for you to let this happen at your school. And Diane, as my colleagues stated, tell them where you got your start in school.
Well, it all started at Bellevue Middle School.
Who was your teacher?
Who were?
Your science teacher.
Yes. And it's funny, because one of the few things I remember from middle school was some of the 4H projects that we did. But this isn't about me, y'all. This is really, really, this is an awesome feat, because it took a lot of work to get all this stuff together. And American Lung Association trained, how many?
The entire staff.
Well, and her entire staff in Asthma 101, so.
Wow.
Anyway, it really is, it sounds like a small thing, but there are a lot of tedious little things that they had to do, but.
Yeah.
It's not, it's not like we in education and you at the school level in particular are not under the gun to get so many things done. And so, to be able to aspire to reach this standard in a multitude of areas, but particularly above and beyond the curriculum and looking after the health and safety of our kids is just really terrific. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, it's so important. Thank you, Ms. Dr. Raming, for allowing Diane to come in and intrude with students to make sure, because it's so serious. Nobody knows until it happens to them about asthma.
That's right.
And you're very much on time in this, because of the atmosphere and the way that life is moving now, we need to know more about these type of elements that will cure asthma. And to be able to, prevention is most important, and that's what you all are doing. So, great. Diane, and I received this call some time ago from Diane. She said, you remember you taught me about embrology?
Yeah.
And so, she has taken the baton and ran with it. And Diane, we appreciate you so much with all the projects that you are doing in our school district.
It is fun. It's fun.
Yes, fun, it is. Thank you so much.
If more schools, we can do, all of our schools can get this award, so.
Oh, okay, all right. We're looking to, we'll talk with Superintendent Pons.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you. Repposed to be heard, none to date. Item of consent.
Move consent agenda.
Madam Chair.
Ms. Rasmussen?
We've the superintendent's recommendation, approval of the recommendations on the consent items as presented in the support material.
Second.
It has been moved by Mr. Rasmussen, second by Ms. Crumpler. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposes, no. It passes 4-0. Thank you. Moving right along. We are on item 18, what is it?
1801, and this is a public hearing, Madam Chair.
Okay. 1801 is a public hearing. At this time, we open it up for a public hearing.
There are no speakers.
Okay. We have no one, so we need a motion.
Madam Chair.
Yes.
Are you concluding the public hearing?
Yes.
Okay. So, following the public hearing, move the superintendent's recommendation to delete policies, amend policies, and adoption of new policies as presented in the support material.
Second.
It has been moved by Ms. Rasmussen, second by Mr. Van Camp. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposes, no. It passes 4-0. 18.02.
Move the item, Madam Chair.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Crumpler, second by Mr. Van Camp. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposes, it passes 4-0. Let's see where we are now.
Wait, it's 19.
19 information items. Upcoming meetings, do we have any at this time? Superintendent?
No, ma'am.
Okay. We're moved to 20. Reports from board liaisons. Okay, 21. Superintendent comments.
None today, Madam Chair.
22, continuing concerns from board members. Okay.
None.
All right, 23, new issues from board members.
Madam Chair, I would just point out that the reason that we met early today and we're rushing through this agenda is that a few of us are headed down to Tampa for the Florida School Boards Association meeting, where we will be receiving a number of briefings on new legislation, the new common core standards, and other important bits of information.
Okay. Also, we'd like to keep Chair Mrs. Joy Bourne family in our thoughts. Okay? Okay? Any other concerns?
Madam Chair.
Okay.
We have a workshop next?
Yes, we will have a workshop at the next board meeting. I think it's on the 25th is the right date. And we will be talking about items related to graduation, you know, our policies related to graduation for students. I've had some board members who'd like that presented, so we'll be ready for that.
And I know, if I could ask, Mr. Superintendent, I know that the idea would be that we would have a good opportunity to have plenty of information presented by staff, possibly by school-based personnel who have expertise in this area. Would that be an opportunity for parents to pose questions?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Just like at any of our meetings, we welcome our parents to come in, especially workshops. I think it's a good point you're making, Ms. Rasmussen, is a chance for them to participate. And I've also got some of our high school principals that will present, you know, to the board, because you've requested, you know, information from them also.
Right. I've heard from a handful of teachers too, who just feel like they have a perspective to offer, having been, especially on the issue of senior final exams and so forth. So, I know that's a topic of interest in our community. And we would welcome the opportunity to hear from any and all stakeholders. Right?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. Mr. Van Camp? Okay, Mr. Crumpler?
Yeah, since we just had a 17-minute meeting, I would like to just take a brief moment to thank the superintendent's staff for an incredibly great school year that we just concluded. A lot of work went into that. And just an interesting side note for those that might be watching on a Tuesday afternoon at 2:00 in the afternoon. I'm always amazed, every time I come out here to this building, the first place that I walk to is the, what's the room in the front there?
Workroom.
The workroom where they're.
Teachers all gathering.
Teachers gather and put together things for their classrooms. And for those people that think that our teachers just work 180 days a year.
You're right, yeah.
And they get the whole summer off.
That's true.
Ran into a fourth grade teacher at Kate Sullivan, first-year teacher. She's, I won't embarrass her, I won't say her name. She's going back to first grade, and she's already in there today, working on her classroom material setup for next year. Then I walk into the big conference room in there, and we probably had, I'm bad with numbers, but let's say about 60 to 70 AP teachers that are in there, receiving instructions. And it's just, it's really neat to see the professional growth and development, and the things that we're doing in this district to prepare ourselves. It's funny that people say to me, Wildy, you're probably happy that it's the summer. That's got to be slow time for you guys. It's not only our budget and busy time, but it's also a busy time for our teachers and administrators. This is a 365-day-a-year operation, almost 24 hours a day. So, I just wanted to take a moment of personal privilege and remind people of the things that I get to see as a, as a school board member and how proud I am to be a member of this team. Thank you, Mr. Superintendent.
Madam Chair, if I could.
Mrs. Superintendent.
Dee just reminded me of one thing. We'd also like to add to our workshop, school grading, because I think the Democrats done a very good job of reporting this. And there's letters that have been sent out to the commissioner and even to the State Board Chair, that we're estimating around the state, as many as 40% of school grades will drop statewide as a result of changing the different proficiency levels, changing in the calculation. I mean, if you think about writing, we've gone from 3 to 3.5 to 4. Now, we're back to 3.5. And, you know, all around in the way we're calculating, there's several triggers that kick in this year that did not kick in last year. And so, I'd like to also, if that's okay, so we can prepare the public, because we're estimating as many as a third of our schools will lose grades as a result of the changing in the criteria. And I think if we can get that information out, invite parents out, where they'll understand that your school might have made improvement, you might have scored higher this year than you did last year, but your school grade could still drop. I know that's hard to understand, but that's the world we live in. So, if it's okay with the board, I'd like to add that to the next board meeting too, so we'll be prepared for that.
Mr. Superintendent, I was thinking that the programs and projects that we have in the school district, at the end of the year, could we get data showing the success of these programs? I'd like to see how, if the program was successful or not, if it was weak, what do we do, need to make it strong? How do we collect this data on our programs that we're doing to be able to assess the data, so we know where we are and know what we need to do for the future?
I think one of the things the board does, and, you know, I've heard Mr. Van Camp talk about this several times too, and it's a good point, is when the board has an opportunity to review the school improvement plans at all the schools, you know, that is an opportunity to take a look at how the individual programs have been put in place, like, for example, Success Maker in all of our schools. You know, what type of improvement did we have related to the, this, you know, type of program that was given in a school? Also, when you look at what's going on regarding to graduation rates, you know, we started here, how did we make the improvements with the programs that we put in place specifically for those students? So, we could actually turn that into a workshop, if you'd like.
I would like to have one.
Where we identified all these, identified what we're doing, what type of special programs we're putting in all, and kind of have a curriculum report with Dr. Gales, Scotty Crowe, the curriculum teams, Stu Greenberg, all of them come in and talk about everything we're doing. That way, if there's anything else you want to take a look at directly to that, and along with any policies you'd like to develop as a board, to support those or to change those could be done.
All right, we appreciate that. Rasmussen?
On a completely unrelated note, but one I think is timely, in case anyone does happen to be watching, excuse me, for students who are going to be busy this summer, doing any sorts of volunteer work, mission trips, working in the community, even at the school. I know the Leon County Performing Arts Program is putting on a major production. These kids are working six hours a day for six weeks during the summer to get ready for it. All of this is considered community service, which can be applied toward the Bright Futures Scholarship. And, but there's a paperwork process involved. And I want to make sure, Dr. Pridgen, I appreciate you getting the word out and having our guidance counselors at the high schools try to disseminate that information. I was talking about, wondering if we could have, I don't know if you've done that yet, Chris, put a button on the website? We are doing that, or we have one? Yeah, okay. Because parents need to understand what the process is in order to get the proper paperwork turned in on time, so that kids' service hours can start trying to apply toward Bright Futures. It starts the summer prior to the ninth grade.
Ah.
So, for students who are doing any kind of community service or mission work this summer, they can begin to calculate and track those hours toward that Bright Futures Scholarship and probably lots of other scholarships. I know best and brightest awards are largely based on service hours, and that's the kind of thing you have to start counting now in order for it to count toward those good awards that can be recognized. So, just a plug for parental information.
Okay.
Good point.
Mrs. Superintendent?
Last thing. If there's any related to the workshop topics, if you, board members would please email Dr. Wills, if there's anything specifically that you would like addressed at those workshops that you've heard from in the community, we'll make sure that we include that in part of the presentation that would be available to, back to the board. So, if you would do that for me, I'd really appreciate it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any other concerns?
Safe travels to my colleagues.
Okay, thank you. Okay.
Before we get started with our agenda, let me turn the floor to Representative Stone, who has been so gracious to offer this room to us today and really give us the opportunity to be here, as well as Representative Diaz, from Miami, who is a leading sponsor of a lot of the digital learning work here in the state. So, welcome and thank you to both representatives.
Good morning, everyone. Thank you, Pam. I appreciate the hospitality. Thank you, all of you, for being involved in the education process. My name is Charlie Stone, and I represent House District 22, which is all of Levy County and a portion of Marion County, which is in central Florida, best known for Ocala, the horse capital of the world. I've been fortunate to serve on five committees this session. Two of them involved in education. I'm honored to serve on the Choice and Innovation Committee for Education and also the Education Appropriations Subcommittee. I've learned an awful lot about the Choice and Innovation Subcommittee that I serve on, because that's the area that we deal in with digital learning, with virtual learning, and all of those things that wasn't available when I was in my school training. And I thank you for being involved in that. Also, I want to thank the Microsoft people. I'm glad to see them here today, because they do play an important part of what you are doing each and every day. I've taken the bold step of doing something that normally people of my age would not venture out and doing. When I learned a little bit about digital learning, I thought, what's the best way to really get a handle and a grip on what is happening in the digital world? I volunteered to sit in on a class. So, as soon as session is completed, I'm going to be a student. I'm going to spend some time in a class, actually learning what happens each and every day in digital learning. So, I'm excited about that. I'm looking forward to doing that. So, perhaps if we can do this event again next year, I'll come back and share my experiences with you and what I, what I actually witnessed occurring at the level that, as a student, and not just a legislator. So, thank you for that. There's a lot of activity going on, on education with different bills. One of the best bills that I had the pleasure of supporting and voting on a week or so ago was the Digital Learning Bill that was actually sponsored by my very good friend, my roommate up on the tent floor, Representative Manny Diaz. And I'll ask him to come say some good things about his bill. Welcome.
Thank you, Representative Stone. That's a bold step. I didn't know you were doing that. But I really do appreciate Representative Stone's support. When we embarked on this digital learning voyage with this bill, he had a lot of questions and there was a lot of pressure, because as you all know, there's a lot of, there's a lot of resistance when you talk about change. And our world, as all of you know, is moving in a direction in which technology is key. And a lot of times, our schoolhouses and the way that our students are learning has not caught up. This bill, and I'm going to talk to you mostly about the bill, is a bill about access to education. No matter where you are, we are removing the barriers to virtual courses. So, no longer do you have to take a virtual course if it's inside your county. You can go to any of the 67 counties virtually and take a course. And that makes a lot of sense. I know there are people in this room, and it makes a lot of sense, if you're taking a class digitally, that you have no boundaries. We're also creating course codes for blended learning courses, so they're not bound by the same rules, regulations as a regular course. There are a few models, and I won't get into those, but I know some of you are familiar with those. The real infusion of technology and the flipped classroom and, you know, the use of tablets and all these wonderful tools that we have. We also have opened up the access to different providers, including something that is very cutting-edge, which is accredited courses. And a lot of, a lot of you know them as MOOCs. We try to stay away from that term, because some people don't understand it. There is a framework under this bill that allows the State Department of Education to create a place where MOOCs can become accredited, as long as they're tied to a state exam. So, we're expanding the boundaries. We're encouraging districts with a pilot program of district innovation schools, where they receive the flexibility, including class-size flexibility, if they participate in one of the three accepted blended learning models. So, we're really excited about this bill. We passed it through the House, it's now over in the Senate. We urge you guys, if you have anybody over there, to make sure you push for your support for that bill. I appreciate Representative Stone's invitation to be here. I appreciate you guys being here in the Capitol. And if you have any other questions about the Digital Learning Bill, feel free to come and see us. I'll be around most of the day. And again, thank you for being here. Thank you, Representative Stone.
Thank you, Representative Stone, and also Representative Diaz. We are excited and thrilled to be here. And we appreciate the generosity of Representative Stone to give us this opportunity to meet today, and also for Representative Diaz for being such a strong supporter of the digital learning and the digital education here in Florida. The only thing, Representative Stone, I believe you said you were from the horse capital of the world? I'm from Lexington, Kentucky. I'll have to challenge you on that one. I think we've, we've got a few, a few other horses in Kentucky. We'll chat after the event today. Again, welcome. We do appreciate you being here with us today. We're excited to have a wonderful agenda, an agenda which we feel will give you a lot of information, contacts from here in the state, as well as outside, to understand what's happening nationally as well. Unfortunately, our opening keynote speaker has been stuck in Atlanta overnight. None of us realized the hectic pace of Atlanta with the 504 leaving. So, he was not able to get out late last night. He will be here with us this morning. But thanks to the Leon County Schools and their teachers and staff that have generously offered to jump to the front of the agenda. So, we're going to start with Superintendent Jackie Pons. He's going to share a few words, and then turn it over to Griffin Middle and their school.
Well, thank you. I just want to welcome everybody and thank Microsoft for their leadership in technology. And to start, I'd like to introduce our school board chair, who's with me today, Joy Bowen. If Joy would raise her hand and stand in the right there, let's give her a big hand for her leadership. Actually, the first thing I'm going to talk about is technology visioning. Where are you at as far as an individual, as a technology leader in the field? And one of the things Joy did to begin with, when I was elected, and I've been elected three times now, is she understood, just like I do, that the number one way to close the achievement gap throughout this country is through the use of technology. There's not anything more powerful that we can give to our students than to give them the technology that opens up the world right in front of their eyes, where they're not learning in the classroom seven, eight hours a day. Children learn 24 hours a day with technology. And that's the world that we have today, and that's what we can do in our school systems throughout this nation if we have the commitment to move forward in this area. Joy felt like it was important that we take our Thark Street corridor, there are three schools there, Riley, Griffin, and Godby, and to try to equip those schools with state-of-the-art technology. We did that, and we'll tell the Griffin story today, which is an unbelievable story. And we're seeing results that we've never seen before. Why don't we do this around the nation at a higher level? We know it works. We know it's the most powerful thing we can do. There's just one reason. We have to pay for it. We have to be committed to pay for it. And that's the issue that you don't hear a lot of people talk about. And if there's anything I would encourage you to do today as an individual, is be an ambassador of technology. Go out into the world and talk about, like I do wherever I go, what it can do for the future of our nation, the future of our state. What can it do for all of our children to empower them to learn 24 hours a day? So as we move forward and we talk about what's going on, not only here in Florida, but in Leon County, I can tell you there's some important legislation that's going on right now. One is the Cape Academy bill that's moving forward that is going to change the way we think about education here in our state, to equip our kids with industry-level certification as they move through school, and several certifications. So not only they can be successful going to college, which is a dream and of course is very important, but also they'll be equipped for the jobs of the future. They'll be equipped to walk right out of high school and possibly get an industry-level job and to earn a living forever in the fields that we know where the jobs are needed. So I think we have to change our focus on technology and on education, and we have to be leaders in that area. I salute our state board the other day for what they did. They brought forth a budget of almost $500 million for technology for this state. And I got up in front of them because sometimes I'm hard on them. We don't agree on everything. But I wanted to tell them that they're leading the way when it comes to pushing technology throughout our state. And you've got to make a stand on issues that you believe in. I've watched what has happened in my life over the past eight years when it comes to technology. And I would challenge you, think where you are today and where you were 10 years ago. And I want to tell you about these students that are here today. They learn differently than we learned. They access information differently. We have to teach them differently than we were taught. And we have to equip our teachers with a professional development. We have to allow them to do some teaching in the classroom. Now, that sounds kind of scary, doesn't it? They're equipped to be the next teachers right now. And the most powerful thing we could do sometimes is to let them teach their classmates with the use of technology. They actually even sometimes, I don't want anybody to fall out of your chairs today, sometimes they teach the teachers. And that's okay. You know, we should accept that because technology involves, we're always evolving, we're always learning, we're always improving. So all that is okay, but that's the new world that we live in today and that we all must embrace. We talk a little about schools of innovation, how important that is. Hey, if I was building a new school today and I was building a school of innovation, let me tell you where I would start. Number one, my number one focus would be technology. 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 I would want to have the state-of-the-art, everything that jumps, everything when kids walk in the room, they're excited, they're turned on, everything that they want to reach out and touch. And you know what you would find? Those kids will perform at a higher level than any children that we have if we give them that type of technology. I think there's a little confusion out there about the digital divide and what we need to do digitally. We talk about how we're going to deliver the next content, and a lot of people think, well, what we want to do digitally is take our textbooks and you put them online where the kids can access them, and that's the real use of technology. I don't want to disappoint any of our textbook people that are here. That's not what the real technology is about. It's about empowering our children to have some type of device, some type of instrument in which 24 hours a day, they can go to the internet, they can go get information, and they can teach themselves and teach others about technology. The world is not about what type of score that you score on an F-CAT. You know, testing is important. You know, we've tested forever. But let me tell you what's more important. Teaching these children to go out and solve problems with the use of technology and to learn information about technology. Teaching them to go out and to Google and find all the information related to the topic that we're discussing in the classroom today. Come back tomorrow with this. Tell me what you found out about this. Tell me what they're doing in China and India related to this issue. We can do all that today, but some places, somewhere other than Tallahassee, because we wouldn't do that in Tallahassee, we're still teaching like we did 10 years ago. We're afraid to embrace this new wave of thinking. We can do better as a state. We can do better as a nation. So as I close today, I'm going to challenge you, and I know I'm preaching to the choirs, Ms. Bowen would say, you have got to be the leaders when it comes to technology. Students that are here, you've got to be the leaders. You've got to tell your story. You've got to go out and tell everybody that there's not anything more powerful we can do in this state than to get our students ready to acquire this information and give them the tools that they need. And also, you've got to challenge superintendents like me. You've got to challenge this legislature. If we know something, if we believe something works and we know it's worked, it's research-based, we've got to pay for it. And we can't educate kids on the cheap in this state. We've tried to. We've got to pay for it. But what are we paying for? We're paying for the future of our state, the most important thing that we have, the most important resource that we have, our children. So as I close today, I challenge you, I hope I've recruited a bunch of ambassadors for technology. I know you probably already are, you wouldn't be here. I thank you for being here today, and we're going to show you what we've done in Leon County, because everybody can talk about technology. Last five years, we lost $111 million in our budgets, Leon County alone. A lot of programs had to be eliminated, a lot of cuts. They were tough times. But also, when you go through tough times, you find out what's important. And we still kept a high commitment to technology. And we're going to tell you a story today at Griffin Middle School that is a powerful story that is changing our children's lives every day, and even in difficult funding times, we were able to pull it off. So I want to introduce the principal of Griffin Middle School, a great principal, Gwen Lynn Thomas, and thank you for having me today.
Thank you, Superintendent Pons. I am so fortunate to serve as the principal leader and an educational leader here in Leon County. As you can tell, we have a visionary superintendent and a progressive school board, and it's my pleasure and privilege to serve here. We're going to begin with an opening video. The Cape Academy is a tremendous addition to the Griffin Middle School Information Technology Program in that it provides opportunities for students to earn industry-standard certifications. As a matter of fact, just between the months of August and December, Griffin was able to earn 29 certifications.
I really believe that all these kids can and will succeed and that our economy's going to grow and flourish based on them. I mean, I truly think that talent is going to be Florida's global competitive advantage, and it's starting with what y'all are doing and what these kids are choosing to do.
Microsoft is one of the companies, or one of the, shall I say, entities that's involved in this particular program. And so it's a wonderful opportunity to be cutting-edge in this way.
In the class, it gives us a skill set that is required in industry for Florida citizens. As a matter of fact, we are producing skills for our economy here. And so our children are able to take these jobs. We've actually had an opportunity with an employer already who's interested in bringing our students aboard to work with them.
The coolest thing about this deal is industry certifications. Obtaining these at a 12- and 13-year-old level as compared to other adults who, I mean, many adults now wish they had these industry certifications and are paying big money to get these industry certifications. And employers are looking for the talent. They're looking for individuals with these industry-recognized certifications.
I think it would be the kind of program that any parent would want his or her child to be a part of.
It gives the students an opportunity to gain these skills so that they're ready for workforce or for college.
Our interested parents and students are more than welcome to visit our Griffin website. On there, you can complete an online application. You can come and have a shadow day. Whenever you stop by, we'll stop whatever we're doing, take you on a tour, let you visit the classrooms and see some of the great things that we have going on here on campus.
One interesting point is that I actually graduated from Griffin Middle School 30 years ago, and it's just been amazing to come back and see the transformation that this school has and just see the excitement they're embarking on learning these new certifications.
Honestly, the reason I'm here today, it doesn't have so much to do with just sort of delivering a speech to you all or even talking about the certifications directly that you received, you know, the other day through all your hard work. But the other day, when we were there and we were having the big announcement and the press was there and we had all of our administrators and teachers there, I just, I really wanted to talk to you all.
After completing their certification, the students have a different aura about them. They're more confident in their ability to learn. Some kids who weren't Level 3s on the F-CAT and have been in remedial courses, now they found that they have their niche in something that's totally different. So kind of like a calling.
It's good for our students to be prepared for the future so that they will be able to support themselves and support families and to be active and productive members of society.
But I really wanted it to be market-based, like what these kids are doing. This is what I always envisioned.
And this program, with them coming out being Microsoft certified, attending the internships that we've established for them, they'll be ready for the world of work.
Griffin is one of only 15 middle schools who have implemented this program. Even in other countries, college graduates are aiming for these certifications.
I'd like to begin by thanking Representative Stone and Representative Diaz, along with Ms. Dolan, for the opportunity to speak to this assembly today. And I've already thanked my superintendent and my school board chair. I'd like to share just Griffin's humble story and its beginning, giving you just a little historical view. And I want to let you know that I take great pride in telling this story. I, as a child, went to Griffin Middle School. It was founded in the early 1920s by the Primitive Baptist Church, and the founding name Griffin Normal and Industrial Institute honored the Reverend Henry Griffin, who was a state pastor here in Florida. In 1934, partial responsibility for this school was turned over to the Leon County Board of Public Instruction, and full responsibility for the campus was turned over in 1955. In 2008, the Florida Department of Education designated Griffin as an information technology magnet school. And with that designation, the physical plant and the curricular offerings metamorphocized into an information technology choice school and later with the Cape Academy or with the Career and Professional Education Model School Academy. The completion of this designation opened transformational learning in Tallahassee's Thorpe Street Corridor, which you heard Superintendent Pons speak about. The three schools, Riley Elementary School, Griffin Middle School, and Godby High School, were able to integrate technology in a cutting-edge way to students attending school in these corridors and opened an opportunity for choice students to come into our district. The academy has earned recognition through media, public meetings and addresses as it is today, and also being able to allow visitors to come into our campus and actually take a look at what our students are actually doing on-site. We've worked closely with the Whitestone Group out of Atlanta. We've worked with Workforce Florida, Certiport, and also the Microsoft Corporation. Now, speaking about our facility, which is very nice, we house 35 intelligent classrooms, seven state-of-the-art computer labs, eight mobile laptop carts, 10 mini-classroom labs, and an almost one-to-one student-to-computer ratio. Additionally, we operate on a dual platform, which allows our students to develop proficiency in PC and in Apple technologies. We are a Title I school, being in the inner-city corridor, and our school has approximately 575 students currently enrolled. In our IT academy, there are a total of approximately 76 students, and I have a group of students, a group of panelists today, representing 20 of the students that are graduating from our academy on this year. Out of the anticipated 175 students that are coming into our school next year, we anticipate a bumper crop of students entering our IT academy with about 40 incoming sixth graders. Our plans for expansion include motivating students who may struggle with the traditional curriculum and offer them the opportunity to pursue information technology certification. The reality of equipping students in our community with marketable and rigorous, relevant skills impacts their learning potential and also their earning potential. It lends itself to changing the socioeconomic status of the families we serve. We embrace the concept of career-ready-for-all, college-ready-for-some, while we enhance academics through the use of instructional and informational technology. Griffin is a designated Certiport site where students can earn their industry-standard certification, and this is a highly rigorous program. The certifications that our students are earning at the middle school level are similar to those that are for students that are at the college level. Many of our high school students haven't even attained this. So when you hear of the students today, you're going to really see and hear something very special. Let's talk about the number of students and the certifications that we have. This is phenomenal. In our 20 students in the academy, six of those students have earned at least one certification. Nine of the students have earned at least two certifications. Six of the students have earned three certifications, making them a Microsoft specialist. And one of those students has earned four certifications. The certifications range from Microsoft Office, Microsoft PowerPoint, Microsoft Excel, and Microsoft Outlook. The rigorous and relevant skills give these students the foundation they need to compete on a global, in a global market. The analytics of our Cape video, the one that was just previously seen, shows that 23 countries have viewed our video, including the United States, Singapore, and Canada. So this lets us know that we have something special. Many of the persons, many of the countries are also looking to Florida to see what those trends in education are. We are living the dream that has been spoken about, that has been talked about. It is realized in the product of our students today. The next phase of our program and the effort is to broaden our opportunities The next phase of our program and the effort is to broaden our opportunities within the community, to allow our students to have internships and job-related experiences. It's imperative to the success of today's digital learners to be able to acquire these skills, set relevant and changing trends in our national view as well as internationally, and to meet the demands of the job market. Not only are we empowering our students to provide Florida's workforce talent needs, we are ultimately, ultimately, equipping them to compete globally. At this time, I'm going to introduce to you a panel of students from Griffin Middle School, and as I call their names, they'll come up. We have with us on our panel Dorian Solomon, Sidney Light, Jonathan Everett, Laquadria Harris, Shadrika Robertson, Deandrea Cover, and one of our students is still trying to get in, Sierra Pace. These students are eighth-grade students at Griffin. They've been with us for the duration of their middle years. These students entered into our campus when we were under construction, when there was no building, when we were speaking about the opportunities that they would have. And their parents saw the value of this cutting edge and decided that Griffin was the place for their children. And now, they've obtained certifications and continue to work on those. I'm going to turn it over to this group of students, and you're going to be amazed.
I'm Dorian Solomon, and I have acquired three certifications, Microsoft Word, PowerPoint, and Excel.
Good morning. I'm Sidney Light, and I have acquired four certifications, Microsoft Word, PowerPoint, Excel, and Outlook.
Good morning. My name is Deandrea Cover. I am certified in Microsoft Office, Microsoft Office Word, and Microsoft PowerPoint.
Good morning. My name is Jonathan Everett, and I am certified in Microsoft PowerPoint.
Good morning. My name is Laquadria Harris. I'm certified in Microsoft Word and Microsoft PowerPoint.
Good morning. My name is Adrian Robinson. I have three certifications in Microsoft PowerPoint, Microsoft Word, and Microsoft Outlook.
High schools in Leon County also have IT programs. Unfortunately, I'm not sure if the high school of my choice has it, which is Florida State University School, also known as Florida High.
Godby High School has, it's actually an IT school, but I'm actually focused on doing the Academy of Engineering and Academy of Finance.
I will be attending Godby High School next year, and I'm going to take the next level of this class so I can get certified in more things.
I will be attending Lincoln, Lincoln High School, and I will be hoping to attend their KI.
These certifications are beneficial for me outside of school also because my mother, she's a teacher, and she has to present, do messages in her class. She's so tired, you utilize PowerPoint, so I'm ready to help her with that.
It also benefits me because since my mother is a college student, I help her with her presentations and her reports.
I utilize Microsoft PowerPoint to use presentations and work out those in classes.
I help my mom do her homework with PowerPoint when she has projects and stuff.
I help my mom with Microsoft when she has presentations to do with her business.
I also even help my teachers around me if they need help.
When I go to college, I want to be an engineer, and Excel will help me with that, help me to deal with numbers, and help me to use functions better.
When I go to college, I plan on being a computer engineer, so this is helping me get a head start in life.
I don't know what I plan on doing later in life. I do plan on going to college or going to workforce.
I plan to become a pharmacist, and Excel will help me with that. Even if you don't go to college, your certifications will help you get a good job, such as becoming a librarian or a teacher of choice.
I plan on being a teacher, and I would definitely love to pass these on to my students.
Also, we have, actually had recognition from Florida Workforce, and I've actually levered from the chairman to come by working for them later as an adult. And I was also speaker at a golden mansion for the Florida Workforce organization.
I'm Susie Sanders. I am a computer technology teacher at Griffin Middle School. And before I get started, I, first of all, would like to commend my students because they really exceeded everyone's expectation, except for mine.